The tally.
I don't.
I'm sure Vince is not back.
He's not.
I don't see Alderman Vitale yet.
Grisham.
I see elder person Grisham.
She muted?
She might be reconnecting. There she is.
Elder Person Grisham?
She was at your muted.
This reception is horrible, so I'm losing audio left and right. I'm almost tempted just to come down to City Hall. Is someone there to let, uh, some of their? I don't know if you can hear me.
You can.
We can hear you.
Okay, I missed absolutely everything prior to. I just got connectivity now.
All you have to do so far is say here.
Here. I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you. I'm so sorry.
No worries, no worries. We are just waiting for Alderman Vitale to switch over, believe.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
This was my first time here at the salon, so like I said, my reception is horrible, and so I keep moving around.
I believe somebody could.
Maybe able to call in.
If you want. Well. We do have a quorum. I just sent Alderman Vitale the updated email with the second address for this Zoom meeting, so I'm hoping he'll join us quickly. Our pledge tonight will be led by Alderman Weigel. So if everybody could mute themselves other than Alderman Weigel, and please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Weigel. We are now going to move on to item D on our agendas, which is public hearings, and I will ask our clerk to read public hearing item number one.
Resolution to confirm and adopt the report of the city engineer containing the schedule of proposed assessments for improvement of Highway 100 from the north city limits to the south city limits by miscellaneous sidewalk repair, miscellaneous driveway repair, and utility adjustments.
Mr. Daniels, go ahead.
Hey, thank you, Mayor Devine. So yes, this is the public hearing for Highway 100. This is a WISDOT job. These are the WISDOT plans, so the state will be doing this. Uh, here are the limits of the project. It's a very long project, all the way from basically from I-94 all the way down to the Hail Interchange Rock Freeway. They'll be doing several things. They'll be removing the existing layer of asphalt, putting a new layer on. They're not completely rebuilding it. This is just another resurfaced job like they did in 1999. That was the last one. They're going to be upgrading a lot of the traffic signals. Again, they did a lot of that during the Zoo Interchange, but they're going to be doing some more. Leighton, Oklahoma, National, Cleveland, and Lincoln. And they're going to be reconstructing a lot of the handicap ramps to bring them up to standards and putting asphalt on a lot of the driveways. Uh, the schedule is actually quite long. They're going to be starting work in July of 2020. They originally picked that time because they figured the DNC would be over. I presume they're still starting in July. That's what they've told us. The work will not be completed until November of 2021, so it's going to actually go over the winter. You know, it's several miles long. It's $15 million, as we'll say, so it's a really big project. That's why it's going so long. The first summer, this summer, they're going to primarily work on the part north of Greenfield, from Greenfield up to I-94, and they're going to do some sidewalk repair, and they're going to work on the signals. They want to get that part north of Greenfield done first because they are actually resuming work on the Zoo Interchange, the part that they deleted a couple of years ago. So they're going to want to use Highway 100 and even a little, that little bit of Greenfield west of the freeway as a detour. So they want to get this done this summer, and then maybe next summer they would start even using that for a detour. So they have an ulterior motive in getting that part done this year. Then the rest of it south of there, all the way down to the Hail Interchange, would probably be in the summer of 2021. There will be several traffic impacts during the day. It's mostly going to be one lane closed during night. It'll probably be about two lanes closed. The road will always be open to traffic, though, so we don't have to worry about complete shutdown. There might be some other short-term closures throughout the next two years. This is the type of thing that we're repairing, that the residents and the property owners do not have to pay for the road. They just have to pay for the sidewalk because WISDOT does not repair sidewalk. It's just something they never ever do. So we are special assessing just for the sidewalk like this, where there are trippers or cracked slabs, like you see here, or settled slabs. The residents are not paying for the road. The WISDOT is paying for the road, but the city has to pay for the sidewalk and a couple of other things, which we'll talk about in a few minutes here. Why do we need to fix the walk? Well, broken, raised, or settled sidewalk slabs do create hazards for pedestrians. Property owners would benefit because it's easier to shovel once you have a nice aligned slabs like this. The city would avoid costly lawsuits or injuries resulting from injuries due to defective walkstones. So, and the sidewalk hasn't been repaired, I don't believe, since 1999. It's been a very long time since we've looked at the sidewalk in this area. Like I said, it's a really big job. It's $15 million. The sidewalk part's only $28,000. We do have to pay, as all utilities do, to have them adjust our sanitary manholes. We don't, they don't pay for that. We expect the same from other utilities on our jobs. So the same with the water main valves. We have to pay to adjust those. WISDOT does not pay for any utility work, nor do we pay for other people's utility work. So those, uh, those costs would also have to be absorbed by the city. So it's a $15 million job. We're a very, very small part of that with our utility work and the sidewalk repair. The bills for this probably wouldn't be mailed out until March of 2022, not '21 and not '20. Like I said, the job won't be done until November of 2021, and I'm not exactly sure when all the sidewalk will be done, so we probably won't be mailing out bills until the following year, 2022. If, if, at that point, you would get the bill, and if it's under $100, you'd have to pay it all. If it's between 100 and 250, we would let you go on a five-year plan. And if it's over, uh, if it's over $250, you would be allowed to go on a 10-year plan. So assuming a $250 bill, you'd have to pay $35 the first year in 2022, and you'd have to pay $26 for the whole year in 2031. So why do we special assess? We've been doing it for over 110 years. City property owners have historically paid the full cost of the street or improvements in front of their house. On this project, the city is going to collect about $23,000 in special assessments. The assessment rate for sidewalk is $6.78 for a five-inch walk and $7.77 for seven-inch walk. We use seven-inch walk in driveways because they get traffic on them. So there's a little bit higher cost for that. And these prices will be adjusted if WISDOT's bids come in less than that, which is possible. So, you know, we act, we can't make a profit off assessments. We will charge you whatever we are charged. So we will pass on that cost to the residents if the bid prices come in lower. Wisconsin has allowed special assessments for over 110 years. There have been over 100 court cases that I'm familiar with where judges have upheld this law as a reasonable way to recoup the cost of these projects. So it certainly stood the test of time. Uh, special assessments are also the only way to ensure that tax-exempt schools, churches, charities, hospitals, county parks, utilities, and even railroads pay their fair share too. No one is exempt from special assessments, even though there are 430 properties in the city that don't pay any property taxes. And many of these tax-exempt schools, churches, hospitals, county parks are very large properties. They actually encompass about 28% of the total land area in the city, and they only contribute to the city's costs through special assessments. One example of that is the Wesleyan Church right by Menards. They're going to be paying $1,363 for their church building. They do not pay property taxes on the church building. They do also own a house next door, which is taxed, but the church itself is not. So that's one example where we're getting special assessments from someone who does not pay taxes. And this map just kind of reinforces that. All the shaded areas are properties that are tax-exempt. That's the 28% of the city that is not paying taxes, and, but they do pay special assessments. So that gives us funding from some of those properties. Uh, in this map, I like to show this. These are all the properties in the past, I think, believe 15, or actually, or 10 years that have paid special assessment. Certainly on the east end of town, it's almost every property has paid at least once, maybe twice in the past 10 years. So everyone is paying their fair share. Every property in the city has paid a special assessment sometime in the last, you know, 50 years, certainly. Uh, the reason that we have an interest, if you go on the 10-year plan, is that the city does borrow the funds for this project, and the city pays interest to those bondholders over the next 10 years. So the city's passing along these interest charges to residents, and the city does not make a profit off of that interest. And this is just to direct you to our website, where you can sign up for the Construction in Progress Report, and you can get weekly updates on all of our construction projects in the city, including the projects that WISDOT's doing, Highway 100, or National, or any other project. So I want to encourage people to sign up for that, and then you'll be advised every week at what the status of the project is. So with that, entertain any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Daniels. Are there any questions from the members of the council on our public hearing this evening? Okay, seeing none, have we received any correspondence from the public on this public hearing?
No, we have not.
Okay, thank you. With that, then, I will close our public hearing, and we will move on to item E on our agendas. Our standard, or what has become our standard, is that our meetings will be meeting virtually during recess this evening. Moving on to item F, the mayor's report. I do just have a statement, actually, I would like to read. "Over the past week, the world has been shocked into action following the senseless death of George Floyd. And I, on behalf of the city of West Dallas, join those around the world raising their voices to bring an end to the violence and injustice that have devastating impacts on our black neighbors and in turn, our entire community every day. The horrific murder of George Floyd at the hands of the Minneapolis police officers is a condemnable act of violence, racism, and inhumanity. Heartbreakingly, it is one of many. The killing of black citizens by those who are sworn to public service is an appalling miscarriage of duty and an egregious violation of public trust. These repeated instances cause untold trauma to our black neighbors who must bear witness to these crimes against their people and live in fear that one day the same may happen to them or their loved ones. As a nation, we can no longer remain silent and fail to act to ease this devastating burden on people of color with whom we live and work alongside. Let me state very clearly that hate has no home in the city of West Dallas. We acknowledge the pain our black neighbors are feeling, and we join them in calling for nationwide reform. We recognize that the diversity of our community is its strength. We understand that there is still work to be done locally, statewide, and nationally to ensure that people of color feel safe, supported, and heard, and we believe that black lives matter. We commit to being open to feedback and conversation and to working harder every day to build a safe and strong community that equally benefits and protects all that reside here. At this time, many of you are wondering what you can do to help our community move forward. Start spurring change and help healing. We encourage all residents to raise their voices against racism and injustice and roll up their sleeves, get to work, building a better world that embraces and empowers our black neighbors. I encourage you to contact all of your elected officials, and even more importantly, I encourage you to vote. You can visit myvote.wi.gov to register. I also want to reach out to the people of color in our community wanting to be agents of change in leading this forward. Please, please contact me to discuss joining city committees, commissions, and boards in order to ensure that future local decisions are made fairly, justly, and made with you, not merely on your behalf. You are welcome, and you are needed. Change is possible. Reform is possible. Ending injustice is possible. Saving black lives is possible. We must come together as a community and a nation to raise our voices on behalf of our black neighbors and stand with them as we work to build a better, safer, and kinder world for all of us. Thank you. That does conclude the mayor's report this evening. Do we have any reports from the older persons?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Tenorio?
I just, I just want to first thank you for your, for your statement. I want to echo your sentiments. Like, as I've been talking with people in our community, a lot of people are hurting right now, especially in our communities of color. A lot of raw emotion, a lot of anger, a lot of hurt, a lot of pain. And I think it's really important that, as city officials, that we, that we recognize that emotion, the fear, the anger, frustration, and the hurt going on. Because what happens in Minneapolis doesn't just stay in Minneapolis. It affects all of us. Like, our black neighbors here in West Dallas, they feel the same pain and fear and anger. So I think it's really important that we, that we talk about that, and I really appreciate your statement. And I really think it's important that, moving forward, we, we take steps in making sure that our, our neighbors, our black neighbors and people in the community and, and people of color here in West Dallas have the space to engage with our city as well. So I just want to say that, so thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other older persons' reports this evening?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vitale?
Yeah, would you sort of like reiterate somewhat, you know, the, uh, questions? You know, I mean, maybe I shouldn't probably brought it to the extent where Alderman and Jolito, you know, I, I, I do understand the consequences, you know, what really occur in Minnesota, you know, was, was wrong. But, but the fact that, again, I, uh, to me, uh, I, I, I did kind of email him about the fact that we have constitutions in this country where everyone has the rights to, uh, address their, uh, views, you know, demonstrating, you know, marching, you know. But the way I feel strongly is not very appropriate for anyone. If, if you go out there to demonstrate your, your willingness to support, uh, Mr. Floyd, you know, from Minneapolis, I, I, I feel that that's great. But when we have to adding more, more, uh, reservists, police protections, people stealing, they broke in in a small business to, uh, to steal stuff and destroy properties, we, like I, I explained before, I mean, I, I have to talk to my heart. We have a problem with this coronavirus, which has been for the last over two months, which has been affecting a lot of the small businesses. In these cases, the percentage of people have been hurt now by destroying their livelihood in a small business. They broke their glasses, they, they go in, they steal their stuff. To be, you know, solving anything but doing that, by doing peacefully, something will get done. But doing this, it, it costs the money, it costs the pressure. It costs so, so much stress, I mean, on everyone. Nobody is happy what happened, you know? Well, let's be realistic. In West Dallas, we still have a good community, you know, with people. I, I have a neighbor's, which is, you know, I mean, I like to say that, is, is a black mortgage police officer. He's a great man. So I don't give a color a person is. I, I respect everyone, you know? I mean, I respect everyone. One person told me one time at the Fredo Hospital, when you lay in bed and you have a black person, or yellow, when they take their blood out, the darn blood is the same color. There's no difference of blood. So, so what I'm trying to say is, let, let's go forward, you know, what the police are doing, what the, uh, the reservists, the people that, uh, you know, they're out there trying to, uh, help the communities, you know? But we don't even know these structures, you know? To me, it's totally inappropriate in a civilized world, you know? I mean, it's not a way to manage or do things because we all feel the pain, you know? I mean, everybody is, not just with what happened now, but with this coronavirus, small businesses are crying, you know? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Vitale. Are there any other older persons' reports this evening?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move for approval the minutes of the common council meeting of May 19th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second by Alderman Vitale. Were there any changes to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Item A, we have no items not referred to committee. We have no standing committee reports.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
Second.
There is a motion with a second by Alderman Vitale. All in favor of recess?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in recess.
All right, then, I'll call the Administration and Finance Committee and the Public Works Committee on behalf of Alderman Roat to order. And, and we have one joint, no, strike that. Two joint referrals for Administration and Finance and Public Works. The first being item four, a resolution to authorize Director of Public Works contract with West Room Leak Detection for a leak detection system not to exceed $13,900 each year for the next five years.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Weigel and a second from Alderman Lysick. And is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. And item five is a resolution to accept the sole source proposal from Rundle Spence for providing two PRS MS2V42 module monitoring and testing stations.
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion from Alderman Lysick and a second from Alderman Tenorio. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
The, somebody.
Mr. Chair, Alderman Weigel.
Alderman Weigel.
Where are these going?
Mr. Chair, this is Dave Webb King.
Yes, please, go ahead, Dave.
So these testing stations will be going at our pumping station. And this, the DNR mandate, any cities that have a population of 50,000 or more are mandated. We are alerted of this mandate in November, December of last year. So we're working with our, and we're actually meeting with the DNR shortly of our plan for this corrosion testing of copper and lead. And again, please remember, we do take in our water supply from Milwaukee, so we should have good results.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Weigel.
So, Dave, we buy all of our water wholesale from Milwaukee. I assume they test it, and is it just because of the, the pipe, the distribution pipe coming from them to us? Is that the concern?
Excellent point. That was reviewed with the DNR, and they still mandated the requirement for the city. So even though our water is directly purchased from the city of Milwaukee, they are required to be, to have this test as well. But we're still required to do that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. And so that ends the joint referral of those two items, and then we move on to the Administration and Finance Committee portion of our agenda. Item six is a resolution to consider an amendment to the 2020 capital improvement program relative to the Burnham Point Streetscape project. Who would like to tell us about this, please?
This is Patrick Schloss. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What this is, is a simple adjustment. There was 150,000 in the capital improvement program, but the block grant awarded 297,000 for the project, and we're amending the CIP program to match with the block grant level of funding was provided.
So we found some money. That sounds great.
Yeah.
Move for approval.
A motion from Alderman Lysick and a second from Dean. Any discuss? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. And item seven is a resolution to provide relief to West Dallas property owners for SARS-CoV-ide pandemic by waiving interest and penalties on May 31st, real property tax installment payments made by October 1st, 2020.
Move for approval.
Second.
And we have a motion from Alderman Weigel and a second from Alderman Lysick. And on this issue, I know we were waiting and on some county action. I assume the county action occurred, and that's why we're able to proceed on this. This is. Kale's going to tell us about it. I see the, I see he's on top of things.
On May 28th, the county board did approve a, a resolution that allowed all the cities and villages within Milwaukee County to waive interest and penalties for any payments received by October 1st. Since this is, there's a small grace period after May 31st. The May 31st payment for West Dallas would be then due by October 1st. It's very important for the taxpayers who are going to take advantage of this to know that the only way the interest and penalties get waived is if the payment is made by October 1st. If it's not made by that time, all those interest penalties actually accrue from their original date. So it's very important to still make that payment by October 1st, but if passed, that's what, that's what would happen.
Thank you, Attorney Decker. All right, and we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item eight, resolution to consider funding $65,000 in grants from the established CDBG CV Small Business Restart Program.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, and then for items nine through 12, can I have a motion to place items nine and 10 on file and to deny items 11 and 12?
So moved.
A motion from Alderman Tenorio and a second from Alderman Weigel. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. And that concludes the Administration and Finance Committee portion. Is there anything else to properly come before the Administration and Finance Committee? Then can I have a motion to adjourn, Ann?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, Public Works will now come to order. I see that all five members are here. We will start with item 13. Resolution authorizing the city engineer to execute a cost sharing project agreement for the reconstruction of the alley between West Arthur Avenue and West Harrison Avenue from South 65th and South 66th, of which the city of West Dallas share will be $17,000.
Move to approve.
Oh, thank you. There's a motion approved and there is a second, and I have no clue as to who did it. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to item 14. It's a resolution to approve the bid of Stark Pavement Corporation for asphalt resurfacing of pavement, including the cracking and seeding of the pavement, pavement milling with miscellaneous driveway and sidewalk repair.
Move to approve, Grisham.
Thank you.
Second, Frankie.
Okay, it's been moved, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I had a question.
Uh, go ahead, Alderman Stefanski.
Pete or Dave, which one, everyone this pertains to. This amount of money that we've got that we've got to pay, with the potential of budget constraints we have coming up for the next year. Would this be something we would consider maybe moving? Or is this part of this year's budget?
This is part of the 2020 budget.
Okay. So it wouldn't carry over into 2021 at all, right?
It shouldn't. The project should be done, you know, by August or September and.
Okay. All right, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Stefanski. Item 16 is communication regarding active streets initiative and partnership with Milwaukee County. And I believe Steve Share is here for that one. Is that correct, Steve?
Yes, thank you, Alderman Roat. Active streets is something that I actually have Tony here on our planner, the development department discussed this evening. Tony, are you there?
Hi there. So due to the pandemic and the increased need for social distancing, we wanted to provide more space for people to walk, bike, and roll by opening, well, closing traffic, motor vehicle traffic, and opening them up to the people along the Route River Parkway in collaboration with Milwaukee County. Other cities have been doing this. Milwaukee, Shorewood, and Wauwatosa has also been collaborating with counties. So we wanted to make sure that we put our parkways to use and gave them back to the people by offering that little bit more of recreational space.
Okay. Steve, if I may ask you a question, because I know Tony did the presentation, but I don't believe he was here when this happened. Alderman Lysick and I had a problem on Jackson Parkway, probably about four years ago, something somewhat similar where the county wasn't repaving and they weren't repaving. And then we'd have them patch holes and they stopped doing that. And we said, what's going on? And they said, oh, we're going to close that down and we're going to put a bike path in there, a 20-foot wide bike path from 76 and Jackson Parkway all the way down to, I believe it was 61st and Cleveland. And basically, nobody knew about it, even the people that lived on the Parkway. So Alderman Lysick and I kind of sunk our teeth into it a little bit and had some public meetings with county officials and kind of got it into a street the way it should be. Is there any way or chance that this is going to morph into some sort of sidewalk?
No. Right now, this is purely the Route River Parkway would remain the same. And I'll have Tony allude to this in a little bit, but just want to give you a quick summary here. The difference is that what the county was doing back in a few years ago on the Kinnik Kinnik River and Jackson Parkway was that they were considering either repaving from curb to curb or like what is current today, vehicular traffic, motorists and so on, or completely putting it in like a pedestrian, biking pedestrian path instead of repaving curb to curb. So that's, that's not what's happening on Route River Parkway. What we're proposing is an active streets initiative where the Route River Parkway would still remain the same. It's still going to be a road in its current footprint width. The difference is that there will be some barricades and it will be open to local traffic. So if you live along the Route River Parkway or if you have a delivery, whether it be Amazon or UPS, or if it's a public works vehicle that needs to get through, they can go around the barricades. It's really, again, just, and Tony, you can back me up on this, it's really just more of initiative to take advantage of people getting outside, being healthy during the pandemic period and our transition back hopefully to a more normal future. So Tony, anything I missed there or any clarifications?
Well said. It's not a permanent program. This is just temporary, temporary program to get us through the pandemic. It's still the end of summer, once things start cooling down and people don't need a space to get out and recreate.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for making me feel at ease. Okay, we'll take.
Mr. Chair, Frankie.
Go ahead, Alderman Frankie.
I realize that we will be in partnership with Milwaukee County. However, the roads have numerous potholes and need maintenance. So would we be beholden to repair the roads of the Parkway because our people would be using them? Or are they going to assume that role?
The county will still be in charge of maintenance of their, of their parkways. So that part doesn't change, right? That there's still, there's still the custodians of their, of their Parkway. They'll need to maintain it in the future on their schedule. I know Pete Daniels is there, but they have, if you're aware of the schedule for their, any maintenance or resurfacing of our parkways. But that would be on the county's program, not, not the city.
Correct.
Very difficult to hear you. The sound is kind of squabbled. But anyway, so is the county going to repair these roads before the fact instead of after the fact?
I doubt, yeah, I doubt that they're going to repair them because of their own budget problems. Yeah, and those parkways are in pretty bad shape, but I don't think they have any plans. I have not heard of any plans of them, for them to repave them anytime soon. But they will.
Are they liable?
Yes.
For any, anything that takes place?
Yes, it's their, it's their park. It's actually a park road. It's their property. It would be their, their liability.
Thanks, Pete.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, with that, we'll move on to item 17, which is a discussion regarding placement of items in the city right of way. And what this has to do with is primarily the roadside monuments that we see along our streets in the city right of way as to where someone may have lost their life. And I will turn it over to Dave Webkin, and he would look forward to you sharing your comments. He's looking for some direction.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the purpose, as the alderperson wrote, as indicated, is sadly, from time to time, the city experiences tragic events on our right of way or our streets. Many times, the memorials are placed at that location of the accident. And the Department of Public Works has to address those memorials. So I would just like internal feedback, what you would recommend and as alderpersons, as the council, on which the department should address these memorials as far as the timeframe. Obviously, it's a very sensitive issue, especially with these tragic events. But I am recommending like two, two weeks to four weeks per my communication this morning. And I just want to make sure if that's in line of your thoughts.
Mr. Chair. Alderman Grisham.
Go ahead, Alderman Grisham.
Um, I was contacted actually recently by a family who had a memorial set up and were very, very upset, very distressed that their items are, items that were left as offerings were taken away. So my input on this is I think there should be some sort of guideline, obviously. And I would support up to one month as to having those memorials. However, with the feedback that I've received, how will this impact businesses and things like that? That was really the issue. It was placed in front of a business in which the business was not happy about this. And how does that infringe upon their rights as far as where this would take, you know, unfortunate situation happen? What, what recourse do we have if we have back from the resident's home or, you know, an influx of people visiting or having vigils, things like that?
Again, for anything that's placed in the cities right of way, we can take action for that. And it's something that is not permitted by the city. So I guess I would recommend a case by case basis and counsel with our city attorney on that.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, go ahead. I believe that was Alderman Stefanski.
It was. Dave, I'm, I'm all for a two-week thing because usually after two weeks, if we get bad weather and, you know, rain and stuff like that, they start getting really nasty looking. And, but I, do we have an opportunity to reach out to whoever put the memorial up or whoever it's for, for them to keep the items that were put out?
Mr. Chair. Oh, that's me, Roat. What we did in my years of service in the death care industry, when I was mowing lawns at a cemetery, every, and I, I don't know what the exact dates were, but everybody would put out wreaths around Halloween and then they would come through, I believe it was like March 1st, and just grab every wreath that was like, like locusts went through that cemetery and they would grab every wreath and throw it in a dumpster. Except if, let's say someone had something other than a wreath, like a very nice, I'm going, like a train or a Christmas tree or something, they would take those and set them aside in a certain area where the cemetery office was. And then when grandpa or grandma came to visit whoever and like, oh, where's that special tree or ornament that we had? We had it in a separate area and they could come back and get it. And after a while, that just disappeared. Then it was like, okay, nobody's coming to complain or to claim these, let's get rid of them. And it seemed to work out pretty well. So I would be of the mindset to, when it's done, if we agree on two, three, or four weeks, or eight weeks, or whatever, that maybe we can set them aside in a nice box, down at Public Works. And, and if they want to come and get them within a week or two, do it. Does that sound right or am I way off on this?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Kale Decker, please.
So what this is intended to do is a discussion to get these exact ideas flowing. While no motion could be passed tonight, right now, there is no policy and Public Works just tries to do what it can do. If there's an interest in drafting a policy, the council can certainly do that. I think at this point in time, and thus Dave has his own ideas, if anyone who wants to take the ball and roll on this thing, then they could contact me to get a resolution or a policy drafted that would address this exact issue. But this is more to raise awareness of it and put in everyone's minds to start thinking through how it could be addressed.
Okay, do you have enough direction from us then? Or not?
Good direction and it's good commentary, but I would, someone on the council or multiple alderpersons in the council, feel free to contact me to start drafting that policy if there's an interest in bringing it to the council.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, Frankie.
I'm going to go with Alderman Vitale first because I heard him first.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I mean, he let Rosalie after me, that's okay.
Make it short, Vince.
Yeah, I will make sure. I mean, I try to refrain myself. But anyway, the, myself, I feel we should, actually, I did email Dave, Dave and Webkin, you know, today, I believe, this morning. Yeah, I, I believe we should sustain the, about four weeks, I think, would be appropriate, you know? And when four weeks comes around, the stuff should be removed. And to me, would be a, a resolution, I think, that any council member can probably sponsor to move forward. To me, isn't that hard, really? And there's no reason to keep those monuments, you know? I'd say, I mean, out of the respect, I mean, the respect, you know? I mean, I, I think once four weeks goes by, you know, I believe they should be cleared out from the city right of way. And that's my strong approach, you know? So, but any other members, of course, we have the opportunity to address ourselves anyway.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Frankie.
Yes. I have to explain to the members of the committee that Alderman Haas and I had an experience with this monumental thing, right up the block on National Avenue. There was a motorcycle accident and unfortunately, the person was killed. And the following week, there was a monument of flowers and balloons and, and signs that were put on a tree by an apartment complex. Well, there were many trucks and cars and motorcycles that visited this tree and even came down into my neighborhood. However, the trucks and the cars, they wanted to make a statement, so they left huge, huge black marks on the street, doing whatever they do to make the black marks, which will be very difficult to erase. I'm sure it would take a long time for them to disappear. But noting this, I would almost prefer only one week, two weeks at most for this mourning to take place of these individuals. I'm, I remain sensitive to the occurrence of the death of this person. However, in respect, sometimes the people that are mourning are being respectful to, to the community with what they do. So I would prefer one week, two weeks at most to have the monument set up. And then I, and I thank Dave Weig for removing the so-called monument and we haven't had any problems since. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Frankie. Okay, we'll move on to item, we'll take them together, item 18 and 19. Those were from the public hearing tonight. It's the resolution to confirm and adopt the report of the city engineer containing the schedule of proposed assessments for improvement of Highway 100 from the north city limits to the south city limits by miscellaneous sidewalk repair, miscellaneous driveway repair, and.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Aye.
Safety and Development now, or motion to adjourn.
Second. Oh, I saw.
A motion to adjourn.
He wants to take over.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Safety and Development Committee will come to order. All members of the committee are present. We have two items this evening. They are both parking ordinances in the first district in the neighborhood of City Yards, items 20 and 21, putting to adopt parking restrictions on both sides of Revere Place from 66th to McKeel and on both sides of 65th from McKeel to O'Condo. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
I move approval. I'm on the committee.
Thank you, Alderman Haas.
Second, Weigel.
It's been moved by Alderman Haas, seconded by Alderman Weigel. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, what's driving this?
Alderman requests.
Well, I could, I could attest to that.
Is it two hour?
Yeah, it's two hours. Two hours. What really has been occurring, that is residents live on. Two hours. What really has been occurring, uh, that is, uh, residents, uh, live on, uh, O'Condo there, which, uh, they, they've been incurring a lot of, uh, problem from the, uh, city employees, which they, there's a few driveways and they, uh, park too close to the, uh, approach and close to the, uh, it's hard sometimes for the, even for the garbage man to pick up their, uh, containers, you know? I mean, uh, so it's been an issue, park on both sides of the street with, you know, because it's convenient, you know? It's close by, you know, but the fact that is the residents are, you know, a little perturbed about it. And that's the reason, uh, you know, I was asked to, uh, do something about it. That's why we, I did propose, uh, two hours restrictions, you know, from, uh, I believe from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. That's, that's, that's the reason.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Weigle.
Um, we're not concerned that they're just gonna park another block over? Because we've, we've, we've chased this parking issue around M A T C in the downtown. And I see Pete sitting up there kind of half nodding, shaking his head. So we're just gonna limit parking on these two streets and then there, we don't provide enough off-street parking for our employees? Or they just prefer not to use the lot?
Well, well, the lots sometime, I think it's, gets full, you know, particularly in the summer months, you know, I think.
All the seasonals?
Yeah, the seasonal employees. So years ago, they used to park on Beecher Street, you know? I mean, I'm really familiar with this. So, uh, but now, of course, they've been tried to, uh, park on the side streets, you know?
And is Beecher, remind me, is Beecher open for parking?
Beecher's open for parking.
Okay, so they'll have, they'll have a spot.
Yeah.
It'll be less impactful on the resident.
There'd be some complaints years back. Somebody said they got their windows smashed, you know? I, I really, I mean, I don't have no proofs, you know, that, uh, it occurred, but, but that's what occurred years back. But the fact that is, there's a planning park really on Beecher Street on both sides, you know? Which, which is not that far. So, yeah. That's the reason, of course, I, go ahead.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, Tenario.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
We are adjourned.
All right, now we have a license and health. Is Rebecca there?
I am here. Um, item, item number 22 was, uh, discussed at the.
Yeah, and we did talk about it. And 23 was discussed just as well, right? And 24.
Correct.
Was approved.
Correct.
Yes.
It was approved to go for a, a hearing on that.
Yes, yes, yeah. That, that's what I meant. So then, then we can move on with item 25, right?
That was placed on file at the committee.
Yes.
So item number 26?
Yes, 26. Let's go with 26.
It's the renewal applications for a variety of licenses, alcohol, adult entertainment.
Yeah, those are, are, are normal. So is there a motion, uh, for approval, item 26?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair. Subject to necessary requirements.
Necessary requirement, correct.
Mr. Chair, one of the people on the list of renewals I know, so do I refrain from just that vote? Or do I refrain from all of them?
Really?
Their group.
That, that's your choice. So, but we can still vote for, I mean, that's, nothing to make any, uh.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Question of whether you can vote fairly is basically, are you gonna be voting on behalf of the city? Or do you think your personal relationship is such that you would not be able to cast your vote in a fair manner based on your constituents' needs and interests?
Okay, I can't. I just wanted to make sure I didn't want to violate anything, so.
As long as you have no personal financial interest or your family has no personal financial interest, then there's no, uh, requirement to state.
Okay. Thank you.
So I heard a second. All in favors?
Aye.
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 The aye, Abbott. Thank you. Then we move on with item 27. Rebecca?
Sure. Uh, item number 27 is a Class B special event permit for, um, Dops Bar and Grill, 1753 South 68th Street for a celebration of light, June 25th, from noon to 11:00, customer appreciation on Sunday, July 26th, from 1:00 to 9:00 PM in the parking lot with a tent, food, and outdoor music.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Roque. Should this be noon to 10:00?
I don't know. I mean, I believe that's from, uh, 1:00 PM to, uh.
Right, but we usually.
Is there a limit?
10:00 PM is the noise ordinance.
Okay.
By 9:00 PM, that's where they're gonna stop.
No, I'm talking the, uh.
On Saturday, 25th, right?
Saturday, the 22nd, it says, uh, 2:00 till 11:00 PM.
Yeah.
So should it be 2:00 to 10:00 PM?
That's what it should be, yes. At 10:00, 10:00 PM, I think it should be the, uh, timeframe, you know?
There could be a motion to approve with that change.
Yes. Is there a motion from the?
I will make a motion to approve, subject to the change of the time from 2:00 to 10:00 PM, rather than 2:00 to 11:00 PM for the 22nd of August.
Second, Rasham.
What about?
All in favors?
Aye.
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 Is that noon to 10:00 PM?
Mr. Chair.
No, from 2:00 PM to, uh.
Mr. Chair.
Did I say noon? My apologies.
Second, everybody, hold on.
Yeah, Rebecca, everybody's talking. Rebecca, go ahead.
Um, we were on item number 27, so that was from the noon to 11:00 PM, which was changed.
Correct.
Noon to 10:00 for Saturday, July 26th. So I believe that was approved and now we're.
Rebecca?
Yes.
It's actually Saturday, July 25th, noon to 10:00.
Mm-hmm.
Sunday, July 26th, 1:00 to 9:00.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. I was reading one ahead. I'm sorry.
Sure. So the next one is for the same location for Saturday, August 22nd, from 2:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and then for the 23rd, from 1:00 to 9:00 PM.
Yeah. Can you change that one to 10:00 PM as well on the 22nd?
It's up to you guys. You guys.
I move to change the time to 10:00.
Second.
Being inconsistent.
All in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
The aye, Abbott.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just to clarify for the record then, could it be a motion to approve 27 and 28 as amended?
Is amended, yes.
If the chair would entertain a motion for that, please?
A motion?
Motion to approve as amended, Mr. Chair.
Second.
I'll take it.
All in favors?
Aye.
The aye, Abbott. Strong, strong, yeah. Strong, yeah. Okay, then we move on with item 29. Rebecca?
Sure. Um, number 29 is for a special event permit for Polly's Pub at 830, 8031 West Greenfield, extension of premises due to COVID from May to October, um, for the parking, for the Polly's Field Trip parking lot and the parking lot north of the Field Trip with tent, food, and outdoor music.
Mr. Chair, oh, I'm sorry, Rebecca, I'm sorry.
Sure, no, no problem. And this is, um, item number 30 is also related. Um, it's for the other location for 1430 South 81st Street. And we do have the applicants on here if there's any questions.
Alderman Roque, I know you jump ahead, but it's okay. You're good.
My apologies again.
No, it's okay. I don't have to, you don't have to apologize.
Okay. Is, is, is that a typo with the parking lot, the north parking lot, north is Greenfield Avenue of you guys, isn't it?
Believe it is.
Uh, no, no, the parking lot north of Field Trip of the old Loses Derby. We have the Polly's location, then south is a duplex, south is a parking.
Okay, okay.
All that, all that area there, so.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I wasn't aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you again. So anything else, Alderman Roque?
No, motion to approve.
Second, Frankie.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead, go ahead.
This is going to.
We lost you.
I'm sorry?
You're breaking up again.
Breaking up again, so said.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay. My question is, um, Polly, you're looking to have this, uh, May through November, you stated?
That's what we, we didn't know how long when we first originally did this, how long we were gonna be closed and, and what our opportunities were. We've done large events in the past. We were just trying to, to make sure that I wouldn't have to go every month or see. We kind of wanted to follow, um, what Kegels kind of did, but not on the street. So we wanted that opportunity to expand, um, in, uh, that it, it's, it's kind of like that to be able to. We would, we've done these in the past for a bigger one, but this way, if all of a sudden, um, something would go on, I, and I don't know the difference between a special use and a special event. Now Steve had helped us out with different things, so I don't know the difference between those. Um, and we did, we have our patio at Polly's that has a special use. It's an, an extension of premise. That's kind of what we're doing.
Mm-hmm.
And I understand that, that the recommendations from the health department are not rules, but we've been trying to abide by those. So I, to make our customers feel safe and to space those out, I think that's an opportunity. Um, I know that, um, um, Alderman Weigle had expressed some concerns. We have done things in the past. Other places have bans. Uh, just Kegels has bans every weekend and, and it's not an issue there. It draws people in. We know, we've really, really, really tried to make sure that everybody's safe on every issue, um, inside, outside, um, and, and I understand that, that, that they are, um, recommendations and we're trying to follow those, um, so that, uh, anything that reflects bad on my business, um, I mean, it, it isn't, especially in these times, is not good at all. So, I mean, we've always been partners with, with West Alice. Um, I think we've been, uh, good partners. Um, and we want to keep doing that. So those are things. And, and whenever something happens, we always take an assessment after it. So if there are issues with neighbors, which we never had in the past, um, or anything like that, we will address those and, and we're very proactive, uh, on those things.
Okay, thank you, Polly. You, you did answer the question that I was going to actually pinpoint was, was there communications with the neighbors? And, um, you're a good businessman, you run great events. Uh, my question would be how frequent you were planning on doing these? If you have a plan going forward, are you planning on moving those bands from a normal inside environment to all outdoor, all summer?
And that's the, that's the same question that.
Uh, public table and Kegels.
Yeah, well, I mean, if other, I mean, obviously there are differences, but they have, you know, 100 people in their parking lot, you know, or more, you know, I, I see those. And if, we already know that the, the stopping time is 10 o'clock. For us, cost effective wise, it probably is not gonna be good to do that. But if we can do something during the afternoon, or one of the things is maybe like a bags league or something like that, to, to be, especially at Field Trip, it's really tiny. And we, we kind of want to work on, on, on the social distancing, but we don't, if I open up Field Trip, we could have four people in there, uh, you know, so, so those are things. And I know the recommendations, but I, I know sometimes when you don't follow recommendations, we've been here 15 years and, and we don't want, we don't want to put a black eye on us or the city. So we've, we've always tried to think proactively ahead. And, and if we can do something smaller, um, things like these, we, we're ticketing events in our own place. We're limiting people right now because we want to make sure that we do it right. Uh, we're one of the bigger ones and we've always tried, tried to do things the right way without having to be told that and, and to work as a partner with that. I mean, we can, we can, we can put together something. I haven't put, this was just being proactive because I gotta put it in three months ago, you know, when this all happened. So then we can refine it and, and we've always worked with the city and we, we'd love to work with, with them again. So we're, we're always good with that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Frankie?
Yes, yes. Go ahead.
Uh, number 29 and 30, um, there is no time schedule that is listed. Should there be a time schedule that he plans on hosting these activities?
I, I believe, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, we've always, I, we've, we've always adhered to what, whatever the city set, tells us, end times. And we usually end, you know, 15 minutes to a half hour beforehand. Because, uh, you, you know, it, it's, it's night, people are having a fun time. And you, you, you have to, um, you have to, uh, be proactive before it becomes an issue. So.
Could give us some kind of idea of what you have in mind for your time?
Well, you know, it, it, like on Friday and Saturdays was 10 o'clock. I mean, I, on, on Sundays, um, we had, we had been done at, at like 7:00 o'clock if we had done those, um, because that, it's easier to clean up, get everything taken care of. Our employees work other jobs too, so we need to make sure that we get them home at a reasonable hour. You know, so stuff generally changes to the inside and it's, uh, those are, are sometimes, you know, the hours there, sometimes it would go just like noon to 5:00 if, if we were gonna do something. Like I said, I, I don't know, I know there, there's gonna be, um, things that go on, but I, I can submit to the, to the, uh, council or, or to the mayor's office or planning or whoever, you know, if we set up a, a schedule of things, um, I think it would be going on how the first one worked. What we did when we started bringing bands back in the bar, we canceled our Saturday band. We did our, our Friday band for, uh, a limited amount of tickets to see what worked and what didn't work, what was feasible, what was reasonable to our, our customers and to our employees. And that's, that's kind of how we've always done things. Because like I said, we, we've always wanted to be a partner, um, with, with West Alice. And if, if you screw somebody over once, you're not gonna be a partner anymore. Uh, and that, that's been my, then, been my, uh, my, uh, experience.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Tom.
This is Tom Lysit.
Yes.
I have a whole of concerns with this, um, because we're not tying down times and we're not tying down days of the week. Um, from, if I'm reading this, this allows you to have a band every night of the week in September and October, when the kids are back in school, playing till whatever time you want. And I think we have to tighten this up. Um, I, I have no problem with, um, and, and the reason I'm saying this, this isn't, isn't my district, but I can see other bars coming in and asking for similar things. And quite frankly, um, in, in the residential neighborhoods that I represent, I don't want this. I gotta be very honest with you. Um, I, I, I don't think it would be appropriate at, in some of the tavern locations that are in my district. So I want to be very careful on how we approach this, so we're not setting a precedent that this is gonna be allowed all over the city. Um, I think this has to be tied down to Friday, Saturday nights, Sunday afternoons. Um, nothing on weekends during particularly, I don't care as much in the summer, but I certainly care during school periods. And I think we have to have the music shut off at 10:00 o'clock, like we make everyone else shut the music off. It's gotta be written in. We, we, nothing is written in here. And, and that's what bothers me. And I, I don't know if there's an addendum or something that, uh, has all that information in it. But if, if we clear all that off, I, I don't have a problem then.
Yeah, I, I, as far as, as far as I understand, isn't it during the week you have to be done by 9:00 o'clock? And on the weekends, it's 10:00 o'clock? I was under that impression that that's the city ordinance. Is that correct or not?
I don't think we act on 9:00 o'clock, you know?
Mr. Chairperson.
Mr. Chairman, could we have that map up while we're discussing this?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Who, could, could someone put that?
Steve, go ahead, Steve.
Yes, uh, this is Steve.
Thank you.
So, um, with planning commission, um, both of these sites, uh, the Polly's and the Field Trip, went to planning commission, uh, last week. And, uh, the planning commission had recommended 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, um, for both, for both sites. As a general, as a general setting of, of, in terms of time. So, um, perhaps that didn't make it a crossover to the, uh, uh, license application. But from the, from the planning side of things, planning commission was suggesting, uh, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. If that, if that helps, uh, frame it a bit.
Mr. Chair, this is Alderwoman Keen.
Yes.
Um, can you leave this map up? I actually had two questions. So would it be Polly's Field Trip having a tent and a band? And Polly's Pub having a tent and band are just located in the Field Trip area that's highlighted? Paulies Field Trip having a tent and a band and Paulies Pub having a tent and band are just located in the Field Trip area that's highlighted?
Um we were looking at, at possibility of doing both, I pretty much did a blanket all over, you know what I'm saying? Because I, I didn't want, I wanted to do the, the most expansive. So if, if we need to reel back or do anything like that, like at, at Paulies we, you just uh scroll down or whatever, or it says Paulies. We own the duplex, um we've done that before, so where it says duplex we would, and we own the alley that, that's there. So if we were gonna do something to, to, for sound protection wise, there's a garage to the east, there's a, uh the house to the west. So it would just go to the building and to Greenfield, which is State Fair Park. So it would actually be south of where that band area says, yeah, so it'd kinda point that way.
Okay, that was my concern with residencies, it seems like it's a battle of the bands and that might be a little bit much.
Right, and if you go to the original Field Trip one, where, where the two vans are. Um a- and, and that was, the only reason we included the, the middle one was for overflow. See, those are like the, and tents, I'm not gonna be able to afford three tents and three, three, you know. Because it, it, it's harder to take care of, so it might be one time that we do something, but the tent behind Field Trip. If we run a band from east to west, Field Trip blocks a lot of the sound as well. You know what I, you know kinda what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So it wouldn't be going to our neighbors, we, we know all the neighbors in back. Um you know, and we've done this multiple times over the years.
Yep, I've been to a few of your events, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and that's kinda all we wanna do, the flexibility, if we have to go over in, in, like I said. Say, you know what, we're gonna have these two bands or we're gonna have one band this, or you know, kinda off and on.
Right.
And I, I'm okay with that, I'll, we'll, we, obviously we'll work with you, I don't know if anybody else does that, but this, we're, we're a little. Yeah, we're just a little bit bigger and some, sometimes we just wanted extended seating, Field Trip. We never did a outdoor back, backyard thing, but obviously people wanna go out and smoke and drink, so I'd rather do it the right way. And get this, get this taken care of than, than, you know, I, I know other places that go out and smoke and drink, you know.
Right.
I, we're, we're a little bit bigger and, and I think if we set a good example, then you have something to tell other people how, how to do stuff too, so.
And then I have one last question, um and I couldn't remember from the past, so will you be selling? Beer outside or just in the bar areas and the reason why I ask that is. Will you have someone carting at the parking lots or is it each individual bartender inside and the person outside responsible for carting?
Everybody gets carted and, and what we've done in the past is wristbands, once they get carted. So they do a permanent wristband that they can't take off, why would you wanna take off? Um I think that's the reasonable thing to do, um we've done right in, in our past. We've, we've emptied out the dumpster and created a, an area there that people could come for cans. Uh ye- you know, and, and those are kinda like, just like a church festival where there'd be something available for them there. If they want something else, they'd have to go into fire cricket, you know, just kinda like that, so. Um we also, I know Alderman Weigle had a question, um as far as. Um toilets, um we, in the past, we have rented toilets, uh handicap. And then with um, with hand washing stations, obviously in this time, it'd be interesting if people use those types of facilities. Uh but i- if we were gonna do something on, on a longer basis, we would do that, so.
Mr. Chair, Alderwoman Gresham?
Yeah.
Um I, I wanna echo what Alderman um Lysick had said, I think that, a- and, and Polly. I know you run a, a really reputable business, but I think we need to tighten things up too and just have a better understanding. Um as to a plan going forward. And um I would be supportive of that, but I do think we need to at least have an understanding when these events are going to take place. It's kind of a carte blanche for you or any business and I would have concerns too, even in third district saying, okay, well. Polly, Polly's kinda setting that precedent, then, then we're gonna do it too. And even though your circumstances might be more ideal, um residential area wise, some other business may not. And, and that puts us in a position.
Well, how does, if, if I can ask, how does Kegels do it, do they give you a list of when they're gonna do events or they just do events?
That's a, that's a good question, um and, and I'm not actually able to answer that, um first district, uh.
Yes, well, I believe, yeah, I, I, I believe, I mean, uh i- if they have an advance going and I mean, it's. Based on the, the way the license was issued, I think they could just go ahead and do it, you know.
Mr. Chair?
You know, there's a timeframe, go ahead, uh.
So there are a lot of questions, I tried to cover a few of those, so. Um number one, we do rely still upon our ordinances which limit by ten o'clock, it still is a good idea to put a time upon this. The way to do that with any older person who wants to do so can um make a motion to approve with whatever limitations they wanna put on it. At that point in time, it would be up to um Mr. Budiak to decide whether those limitations are reasonable enough for him to actually operate under that license. So at this point in time, the council can, so whoever, if anyone wants to, they can put a condition or limitation upon that and move for approval. Otherwise more discussion can take place. Um also the question you had earlier, the special use as to zoning, this is a special permit. So it would extend the license premises as indicated on this map and all the rights that go along with it unless the council imposes some sort of limitation upon it. Or unless a general ordinance applies, and yes, there's a general ordinance with ten o'clock outdoor music. Finally, um every licensee is subject to the operation of a disorderly house. Um that's the grounds for revocation of a license and so. Uh every licensee who gets an alcohol license knows that and has to ensure to operate in a way that doesn't disrupt the neighborhood uh significantly. So the concern's there, there is a, there is a solution for that if uh things get out of hand and, and Mr. Budiak doesn't respond. Uh appropriately, the council could still take action at that time, so it's not like there's uh no options for the council.
Thank you, uh, Kial.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Wrote.
And I wrote, yeah.
Um, don't move that map, leave it right where it is. Is four, i- the way I'm reading is, it's, it's a little small, or maybe I need new glasses, but fourteen thirty, is that the Field Trip building? Is that a little house there, what is that?
That's Field Trip building, that's the Field Trip building.
Is that a bar?
Yep, that's the old Loses Derby, old derby, we bought that five years ago.
And then to the south of that, there's the parking lot and then this next building south is what? South right there, kinda near those two, right there, what is that, is that that uh apartment, brick apartment building?
Correct.
Auto place.
Okay, do you own that too?
No, they asked, they asked me to buy it, but I didn't want to buy it at the time. Um we've, yeah, I, I mean, I, I know most of the people that live in there.
Okay.
We've always worked with them.
Polly, just one more question, are these tents going to be um stationary for the entire duration of those months?
I, you know, it depends, the, how this kinda came about, our food supplier had worked with Arenas Rental. Arenas is like the largest in the world, it used to be Carl's, they have no events, so they're bringing them in. What they did, if you look on, oh especially when it first started, it was social distancing to. Be able to bring more diners or drinkers outside to do that because we have, uh you know, all of our tables had. And I know it's only a recommendation, but all of our tables are six feet apart. We try to limit the bar, if people work together, but we're still, you know, all of our employees are wearing masks and gloves, we're. We're trying to do things the right way, so if you look at the tents, they came to us and said, you know what, maybe we can, we can do some more uh food. Thinking, you know, US Foods, thinking that, cuz they're, ob- obviously their numbers went hugely down. Um my wife had been passed uh Blue Egg, which does a ton of food, they're, they're putting a, a one in their parking lot. Or they, do they have one already, they have one already in their parking lot, to kinda do this and there earlier in the morning. So I, you know, um I, the one, the one at like right behind Paulies. I would see how much impact it would be for the first month because it doesn't pay for me to have it for more than a, uh, you know, more than a month. If I have to keep paying and there's no re- return on investment. Field Trip, I, is, it would be the same thing, but I'd like to be able to, you know, back here by where the vans are. Uh, yeah, kinda there, you know, we had looked at, at different things for spacing out tables. And, and different things to make people feel comfortable, the, the band in the middle was, that was, I, like I said, I tried to do all encompassing. And, and I have no problem amending things to work with, with everybody, but I, I think. You know, it takes two and a half months of foresight to put this together. So anybody else that is gonna do this, you already kinda know what limitations you wanna put on me. And, and that, that should be, you know, the same limitations that kinda everybody has a consistent thing, whether it's Kegels, whether it's us. And we try to do the, the right thing.
Mister, Mister Polly, I would like to ask you, so your consideration is uh your proposal, you proposing to uh. To have that uh seven days a week uh for the durations of the summer?
I mean, I, you know, they, these ones like the tents and stuff, they can't take down readily. And they, they have lim, they have limited employees too, because a lot of them are, are still unemployed. So that's why their thought process is, if you can have it up, you can have it up. You know, i- if we need to go and say, you know, eight o'clock, Paul, on your tents at night, you gotta shut those down. We, we can work with that, i- it was just for, for different things, so. Um, yeah, it, I mean, these are, these are regular, regular tents, good tents. Um so there's, there's no wires on them, these are the ones that are generally uh more expensive. It's, it's just able, just like State Fair, you know, State Fair tents, stuff like that, but if.
Like a more permanent.
Oh yeah, I mean, I mean, yeah, I mean, yeah, right, I, right, they're, they're, yeah, they're not gonna take it down every weekend. Like when we do our back lot, we do that for three days, but there, I mean, the cost of, of those are crazy. Uh that's when everything else is going on and they, they were able to give us a better rate than what that was. So that's why we had thought about this and for the extra dining, the extra spacing, I, I know that. Um some people aren't gonna be able to come out and do things, but they may come outside to dine. You know, you're li- looking at Marcus, Marcus is trying to think out of the box, doing drive-in theaters. You know, things like that, so other companies are trying to do the same thing. Um in, in within, within what we can do, um but I think it's an opportunity, um. It, an opportunity to work, work with uh me being the guinea pig and, and saying, okay, Paul, this is what, this is what we, is reasonable, this isn't reasonable. You know, is, is a one person, uh if I would have a one person on our patio, is that reasonable? Does, I don't even know if I can put music on my patio. You know, I, I don't know what, what the whole, the whole rules are or anything like that. So these special uses that I just figured instead of, sometimes people can do twenty of them, sometimes people can do ten. And I know that people do stuff without asking and going through the proper channels and I try to do that, so I know the rules and regulations to make.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mister Polly, I, I, you know, I appreciate that. The uh question that I have for the committee members, uh wha- what is your uh input?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, if I may, Alderman Weigle?
Go ahead, Ald- Alderman Weigle.
I have several questions uh including process, I have several concerns. Um is this gonna be approved tonight? Because quite frankly, I would like to formally hear from the, the affected neighbors. Polly used the term guinea pig, that he's the guinea pig, but the reality is we have half a dozen houses. Some apartment buildings that are gonna be the guinea pigs, I'd like to formally hear from them, would there be a public hearing on this?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Uh if I may, I'm sorry, Mr. uh Alderman Weigle, but there will be a public hearing on the Field Trip because it does require a special use, that'll be on June sixteenth. But the Paulies Pub is uh actually uh, uh could be acted on this evening.
Okay, so now I'm gonna express some of my concerns, I think we're all very familiar with where we are in this. Situation with COVID and events canceling. My concern is, I, what I see here, a- and Polly's a great operator, he and his wife do a great job, you know, and I have a hundred percent faith in what they say. But they can limit the number of people coming their door when they have an event, just by saying we're at capacity. And outside venue, it's gonna be much harder to limit. There's not gonna be any church festivals this summer, there's not gonna be any Bastille Days. There's not gonna be any Miller Lite Ride for the Arts, there's not gonna be all those things that are competition for the bar and restaurant business. So this to me looks like two stages and beer tents that. We might approve for every weekend all summer long. And I think I just need a lot more questions answered, I would, I would have a hard time approving, supporting this through October. I stopped by, talked to Polly today, very briefly, um I did see this on the plan commission, that's where I got this stuff from. Um if, I, I guess, we'd like Paul, you know, I understand, and I've used Polly as an example here, as the guy who's probably hurting the most out of this COVID thing. He's got the most at risk, um we want him to stay here, uh you know, but I just have some real concerns. About this could very easily be overrun in a nice weather weekend, hey, there's two bands playing at Paulies outside and. I don't know that he'd be prepared, I mean, are you gonna be stopping people at the door, at the gate? Um and again, if this is about COVID, okay, I think, I believe Polly's physical capacity in his, in his main restaurant is two hundred nine, call it three hundred, okay? S- are you gonna let more than three hundred people onto the premises then when you're doing a band? And, and what's the capacity at Field Trip, what's Field Trip, seventy-five?
Seventy-three, yeah.
Okay, so I'm looking at that area where the blue tent is and the green tent potentially and that. You know, that's gonna be way more than seventy-three people.
Sure, I, 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 the, the, the middle one, I didn't know, sometimes people wanna walk there, you know, they got their. Whatever to go get smokes and they grab a beer, I, those are kinda like the things there, like the middle tent is, is gonna be like a seven thousand dollar.
Well, and again, those are all things that we need to clarify and get in writing before we just say, go ahead Polly, have at it. So I think if we could've had a conversation about this last week, I mean, I just saw it pop up on plan commission, I think it was last Wednesday or whenever it was.
Twenty-seventh was.
And uh, I didn't realize, yeah, you know, um and I guess, and I understand there's gonna be the fixed costs of bringing the tent in, that's gonna be the big, that's gonna be the budget buster for you. And it makes no sense for you to bring it in, I imagine for probably less than a month, depending on the weather and what else goes on. I understand that, you know, we want you to make money, you know, I think you know that. But we can't, you can't just sign off for four months, three or four months and then, and not have a way to rein it back in if it's a problem. And you know, in the comparison to Kegels, Kegel, Julian doesn't book the same bands you do. I mean, let's, let's face it, he does polka stuff and kinda some pretty chill stuff, at least what I see there. And Blues Egg, Blues Egg isn't doing bands at all, I don't think, that's breakfast brunch.
It's hard to, it's hard to tell.
Breakfast brunch at Blues Egg, you know, so this is, this, I, I don't want this to turn into a church festival every weekend.
Okay, yeah, I.
That's my concern, you know, so um I, our next council meeting's in two weeks, we have two in June, is that correct?
Yeah, the ninth.
Yeah, so. I, uh unless we can come to some sort of agreement tonight that we work out the details with staff and Alderman Stefanski and I and any other interested alders. Because, and like you said, you're the guinea pig, other people will be pointing to what you're doing and say, hey, you let Polly do it, you gotta let me do it in. In the rest of the city, to be fair, so I, we'd like to see.
Right, and I, I do believe that and I don't, I, I'm not gonna lie, I, I think uh people. There are other owners that don't have the same drive and follow-through.
No, you're right, you're right, and yet, and it's a big deal, I, most bars couldn't put this together, I don't think, and I'm, I'm not trying to. Think of any off the top of my head, I guess, I don't know, but um it could be a smaller one, you know, look, you let Polly have two, two, I mean, the reality is, you're gonna. You guys both run both these bars, you know, and so it's, it's gonna be two stages, some, sometime you will have two bands there, I imagine.
Yeah, I mean, those, those are ones that you can go outside aside, I mean, I, you know, for me. I- if we, if we run more in, in, in Paulies, you know, Field Trip. Is the more extension of premises because of the fat, whether, you know what, we have a tent and we say no bands. Something or, or at least I can put picnic tables out, so people can go out and, and have a drink and have a smoke on the property.
Well, Paul, the, the Field Trip will have a public hearing, we will hear from the neighbors on that, and that won't be till June sixteenth, so. I imagine we could probably act on it that night, so you could have the contracts dotted with the tent guy and all that conceivably. But I, I think you probably wanna get. but I, I think you probably wanna get rolling with the Paulie's side of the equation, or we're gonna do all the tents at once.
Well, I, no, I, I, I do everything spaced out, so that I know exactly, this is exactly what I need to do, this is exactly what I have. So I can see, you know, if, if we have Paulie's, it, it may not even be an idea to, to do it, um, you know, for the month of June, I, I don't know.
So we need to know this stuff, Paulie, you know, we need, we, we need to know this, it needs to be in writing, it needs to be in amendment, or something, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, we don't know, if I can, I don't even know, 'cause a lot of bands aren't even booking, because they're afraid of-
You'll see a lot of them are looking for small gigs, 'cause I'm considering going back to live music in here at my place, and I've had a bunch of people reach out to me already, so, smaller band, people are, 'cause, yeah, you're right, there's no market, Summer Fest, church festivals, they're all looking for, they're all looking for work.
Yeah, I, I mean, even the, the, yeah, even the bigger ones that, that we've, we've had on the schedule for a long time, some of them have diabetics in the bands, so they're not playing, you know.
So, can we speed this, I just, I mean, I wanna get this over with tonight. Um, can we get together tomorrow or some, I, I guess, I don't know what the committee's will is here on this. I'm not on this committee, you know, but-
Mister Chair, if I may-
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, I think we need to have more discussion, I think we spent a lot of time tonight, I don't think there's really a way that we can button this up the way we need to and feel comfortable about it, I'm speaking for myself, but I'd like the committee to weigh in. Uh, Paulie, I don't wanna put you off any further, but we have spent a lot of time, and there's just too many questions that we have. So we can reconvene on this, um, have a bit more discussion, or at least you come forward and have a plan with specifics, uh, dates, things like that. There, there's just too many questions that I have.
Okay, and, and I'm, I'm fine with that, I just wanna know exactly what does Cagle's have to give you? Do I, do they have to, you know what I'm saying? 'Cause it, I, uh, then I'll run it the same way they run it. And, and obviously, they've had that for two years, and it's a street, so, you know, so-
Okay, Ca, Cagle, they don't have music every night, you know, I mean, they don't, and they even have music on weekends many times.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
He has to come up with a plan, he has to come up with times, and he has to come up with the days. So actually, I would, I would put it on hold while he comes up with a plan with our, with our staff.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
My understanding of this, and please correct me if I'm wrong, no matter what times and dates, or whatever you come up with, these tents are gonna be up there for the whole duration until October of twenty twenty, correct? 'Cause they're not gonna come and take them down every three days, you, they're gonna be up there for the duration, correct?
It, it's a monthly rental, they're, they're monthly rentals, so if they, if there would be no return on the investment, it wouldn't, it wouldn't pay to have the tents. You know, you know what I'm saying?
Well, let's, uh, I, I believe the committee is willing to, uh, put on hold at this time until we get further, uh, updates or further information from Mister Paulie, and then, so, so we're gonna hold it.
Mister Chair, Mister Chair, there's one thing to add, I don't, I don't think that we should be demanding dates of when Paulie's gonna have an event to schedule something, I, I think if you're gonna do anything, you should limit it to time periods of a week. So if we're gonna say, Paulie's allowed to have bands, he can have bands Friday nights, Saturday nights, and Sunday afternoon. I don't think he should have to give you a schedule, us a schedule of who the band is, when he's gonna have the band, that type of thing. I think if you're gonna do anything, you limit it that they, that, that type of a schedule, and say, during the week, maybe you're not allowed to have bands, that type of thing. That's just a suggestion I'm, I'm throwing out there.
I, I believe says it's a good suggestion, I, I believe maybe that's one direction maybe we should, uh, follow, you know, I mean, if everybody agrees with that, you know, I mean-
Mister Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So, so one thing you could do is just simply ask the committee now, and say that this item will be postponed until the June sixteenth meeting without objection, if you don't hear an objection, then we can set it over. Mister Boudia can work with planning to start developing, some of these, um, restrictions have been discussed tonight, and then you can bring it back to the committee on the sixteenth for, for the consideration, that's a possibility.
Mister Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Alderman.
Do we have a, uh, don't we have a meeting on the ninth of next week?
It's just a license meeting.
No, it's a full, it's a council meeting. There's a full council, there's a full council meeting scheduled, uh, it's scheduled for the purpose of potentially hearing some license discipline matters. Right, you don't know if there's, there's nothing else that was discussed at that time, but it is a council meeting.
Could we add this to it?
That will be a very long meeting as well.
It might grow along depending what happens with the disciplinary hearings, and plus, this, the public hearing on the Field Trip side won't occur till the sixteenth anyway. So it's up to the council how you wanna handle it.
I would recommend to wait till the sixteenth, meaning that it's gonna be, uh, heard on the sixteenth anyhow. It gives Paulie time, gives our Plan Commission time to work together and kinda put together a plan.
For both of them, right?
Correct.
Okay, to me, that's how we should do it, I agree with that, so, so let's hold it until, until, uh, June sixteen. That's consensus of the members, right?
Yes, I make a motion to hold it over until the sixteenth.
Okay.
All in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I have it, thank you. And there you are. I'll talk to Steve, thank you.
Thank you, Paulie.
Okay.
Thank you, Paulie.
Rebecca, we have anything else? Rebecca, you there, right?
Yes, I'm here, um-
We have a-
All the other items were taken care of or discussed at the last meeting.
The last meeting, so I think we're done with that, so.
You make a motion to adjourn?
There is one other, or there was an item actually in the committee, uh, agenda talking about licensees, uh, and what happened with the COVID nineteen issues.
I withdraw my motion.
I thought, I thought that was on the, it must've been on the six o'clock meeting, we just didn't get to it, so, if someone wants to see, it would've been, I think, letter B or something on the six o'clock agenda.
Yes, correct.
On the six o'clock?
Correct, when that meeting was, um, it was recessed, so someone could call that back to order under this section, there's, I do have a couple of questions for the committee.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Violation?
I withdrew my, my motion.
Thank you, so this is basically an update to the situation that occurred with, uh, the state and local health orders. So, there are several establishments that, um, opened during the pendency of the state order. Other establishments opened during the pendency of the local order, and so this is more a general idea of what sort of, uh, enforcement action the committee may be interested in taking against those who violated the order. They said there are three groups that I could split them into for the committee's consideration, and that'll determine, uh, what type of complaints are served for the June ninth council meeting next week. And so, um, I think any type of, uh, reaction, especially from th- this committee, is gonna be directing us on what type of complaints to file. One category would be those who opened without necessarily knowing a local order had been issued, and shut down upon being informed by the police. Uh, the second category would be those who opened up and then refused to shut down after the, um, police informed them of the, the fact that there was a pending order. And then, there's a, a sort of a third category, so, of those who not only opened, but tried to do so secretly, or tried to do so in a clandestine way. Um, and so they clearly knew they were doing something wrong, and still tried to hide it. So, uh, it would be ultimately up to our office to prosecute that case, or someone would do that, but I wanna get some feedback from the committee as to what sort of discipline you think might be appropriate, given those three categories of licensees.
Hey, Kale, I believe that we should really, uh, for those people, really, that this regard, the, uh, the fact, uh, I mean, with the, uh, police presence, uh, going to their, uh, establishment, and they even disregard, to me, it's a misrespecting, you know, the laws, you know, they just kinda says go to hell, basically, that's what they told them, you know? To me, I think they should be served with some sort of complaints, those three or four, that will violate the, uh, our city, uh, license, you know, ordinance, you know, for the, the ruling.
Mister Chair?
Chair.
There.
Mister Chair, Alderwoman Gersham, um, uh, in, uh, respect to, uh, Kale's, uh, category, if they were unaware, because there was some confusion. Um, the order was lifted, everybody, you know, there's a, a multitude that did open, but if they respected and abided by the rules, closed down or the order, uh, and didn't violate it again, I don't think we need to hear those. Um, but, uh, category two and three, I agree, I think there should be summons, and I'd like to hear more. But as a new alder, I don't have a huge history of the, the establishments in the area. Could we also have any, uh, any, um, information, if there were order, um, violations with those establishments in past, to kinda give us a better understanding, if there's a specific, um, pattern?
Yes, any complaints would include any type of other historical violations.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mister Chair?
Mister Chair, go ahead.
All right, so, the first one that Kale brought up, I agree those people, if, as long as they shut down, should not have any kind of penalty. Second question for Kale is, what about the ones that went by what the tavern league said that con, that conflicted with the, the county ordinance? How do we, how is that handled, like, on a legal end?
So when the tavern league issues something or recommends something, unless it's, I mean, even if a lawyer would've advised them, their own personal lawyer would advise them, if it's incorrect advice, ultimately, it's still the licensee's responsibility. Um, so as far as being in violation of the order, that still would be true. It comes more to a question of, does that mitigate their discipline or punishment, and that would be a decision for the committee to make.
Did any of the ones that are in the second or third category that you gave, go, go open and be open based on the tavern league's, uh, recommendation, you know?
I, I don't have that information, no, and that would, but that would be something I'm sure would come up during the hearing.
Okay.
Mister Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Tom.
Kale, how many fall into that second and third category? I mean, are we talking a lot of them?
There were four, I believe, yeah.
I would say less than five.
Oh, okay, so if we had to have hearings, it's, uh, 'cause my thoughts were, uh, if someone stayed open, um, how long did they stay open? I think our minimum, if we end up with a suspension hearing, the minimum we can suspend them is ten days. Um, might we be better off talking to those people, and if they were open for two days, getting an, an agreement with them to close on a, on a weekend voluntarily, and, uh, forget it? Um, you know, they, they were open for two days, they closed for two days, and, and to me, that's a, that's, the, the punishment meets the, uh, the, the crime. Um, the ones that were open clandestinely, the speakeasies, I'm gonna call them, um, uh, that's a different situation.
So that is one thing that I could certainly contact, or attorney, someone could contact the licensees and offer that, and say, would you like to bring a stipulation to the committee for its consideration, to the council, for its consideration on the ninth? And if approved by the council, that'd be it, um, they would, of course, then just be, there'd be no hearing, but-
I, I think it's, Kale would be, uh, I think it's important to explain, 'cause we've got newer members on the council now, what it entails to call these people in and have a hearing. I mean, I know other people have been on, on the council for a while now, it's, it's not an easy thing, and it's not inexpensive.
Sure, so generally what we'll do is, a complaint is filed and signed by the chair of license and health, just to get the matter before the, the committee. In this case, um, the chair will still sign it, but it's gonna come before the entire council. It's gonna call in the licensee, we'll have attorney Sirwin assigned to the committee, or to the council. Uh, I'm sorry, attorney Sirwin will actually be assigned to prosecute the case, and then another attorney in our office, attorney Hammack, will be assigned to the council to represent their interests, um, to make sure that they're following the correct process. It's sort of like court, where there are witnesses, people are sworn in, hear testimony, uh, it's called a quasi judicial hearing. The council could then meet and close session to deliberate each particular complaint, and then, uh, render a discipline, which could range from, uh, nothing to ten to ninety day suspension of the license, to revocation of the license. And so it's, it is no small process going through this. The factual scenario is gonna be pretty simple, the question's gonna be, were you open or not? So it's not a difficult factual case, but there might be a great deal of deliberation that occurs. Uh, there might be a lot of witnesses involved or argument made, so it can be a very long process.
And will the, uh, Mister Chair?
Yes.
Will the, will the, the officers who went to the establishment, that, and they did not shut down after the police officers, you know, told them they needed to, will they be there also to testify against them?
Uh, the goal would likely be to bring officers like that in, however, all these instances were also video recorded. So, there's a possibility of just entering the video as the evidence as well, with, uh, proper custodial testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Chair?
Mister Chair?
Yes.
Mister Chair?
This is Alderwoman Keen, um, Chief Mitchell, each of these, I know in our orientation, we had briefly spoke about it, but, um, some of these violators are gonna be receiving municipal citations, or?
Yes, yes, we're working that out with the city attorney's office right now, we don't have a final answer, but yes, it is my belief that we will be giving tickets in addition to whatever the council may choose to do or not do.
And, and what, do you know the, um, how much the citation is?
I, yeah, six eighty-one.
Okay, all right, thank you.
For each occurrence.
Each occurrence, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mister Chair, Alderwoman Gersham, um, and Dana, thank you, I was gonna bring that up with our orientation, because as we look at this as a, as a committee and sanctions, um, we do have to look at the costs involved. However, I had, um, questions regarding whether the multiple, uh, violations, um, and they're probably, from my understanding, were just a couple establishments that repeatedly defied the order. Uh, that we're not looking at, I wouldn't be looking at bringing everyone forward, but at least being able to see and hear, um, what actually took place. 'Cause if I understand correctly, Chief Mitchell did say that, you know, the, the police were dispatched, and it was recommended that they close, that they were, you know, going against public hu, health order. However, um, we were not gonna use our resources to make them shut down.
Correct, yep.
Well, you know, the, uh-
Mister Chair?
Go ahead, go ahead, Alderman Road?
Uh, Chief, is one day equal one incident, or if they're open three days, is that eighteen hundred bucks, or is that still the, whatever amount?
So it could be eighteen hundred dollars, that's something that we still have to work out with Kale and Nick Sirwin. How many citations are we going to issue? They are subject to a citation for each time that they violate it, no different than if you're speeding your car. If I catch you speeding on Monday, you get a ticket, if I catch you speeding on Tuesday, you get a ticket. But just because you can get a ticket, doesn't mean that you will get a ticket. So that's still a part of the conversation with Mister Decker.
Okay, and one more thing, Alderman Vitale, if I may, I, I tend to agree with Alderman Lysick with, if they're open for two days and we know it, we should, they should close for two days, but make sure that they know that if they don't, there's ten days looking them in, right in the eye for a summons or complaint. I, I think they should be aware of that as well, and if we do the, the day for day, and two days for two days, we will be notifying the police department of those days, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mister Chair?
Go ahead, all, all the person, Rosalie?
Would we, uh, would we do this a, as an alternative to having a hearing then? I mean, definitely, they need to be disciplined, however, I, I frown on, on going through hearings, because as Tom has alluded to, it is heavy, as well as our attorney, it is heavy duty, um, with calling in the witnesses and the police and everything else, so can we offer an alternative to having the hearing?
Yes, so based on the suggestions I've heard tonight, it's my intent to talk to attorney Sirwin about this, but, uh, contacting the licensees who fit into categories two and three, and essentially offering them the opportunity to suspend their own licenses voluntarily for the number of days they were open. We'll then bring those, if anyone wants to stipulate to that, we'll bring those stipulations to the council on the ninth for the council's approval. Uh, otherwise, if they don't wanna stipulate to that, then it's likely that we'll conduct a hearing on the ninth, and then they're facing, if found, uh, truth, the complaint's found to be true, face- Otherwise, if they don't want to stipulate to that, then it's likely that we'll conduct a hearing on the ninth and then they're facing, if found, uh, truth, the complaint's found to be true, facing a 10 to negative suspension or possible revocation of their license.
Mr. Chair.
That sounds like an excellent plan, yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Alderman Stacy.
Kale, how many establishments blatantly violated it for multiple days?
Less than five that we're aware of.
Was there any of them over two?
Uh, Chief, may I have some more information on that?
Yep, so I'm, I'm gonna politely request to be excused from the meeting. There is events occurring in the EOC that I would like to go and address, uh, from a city near us, they're not having a good night. And the suburbs are getting called into action, so I think Kale, are you comfortable handling this discussion from this point forward?
Yes, Chief, it sounds like you get more pressing issues right now, at least. Thank you, Chief, be safe.
Thank you, Chief, be safe.
Yeah. Kale, I, I have, you know, I, I hear about there is some complications in reference of the, would be some cost. But, but, but the fact that is that, you know, easterns will really occur, I mean, and like Alderman Lysick said, you know, and well, Alderman Persson, Rosalie, Ranky, if we give them the two days based, I mean, days they were open, I mean, that's, that's the way we should follow. And then they will still be, will pay their fine, right, based on the, what I heard tonight, but still we're gonna give, they gotta pay their consequences when really it happened.
Attorney Sirwin is working with the police department to decide what citations to issue and to whom, based on their individual circumstances. So some may or may not face citations as a result. Reason this is even coming for the committee is because a lot of bars and restaurants in West Dallas did comply with the order against their own interests. Uh, and so we wanna make sure that we at least have this opportunity to go to the committee and bring forth some facts aside what the committee thinks is a fair way of resolving it. That's why I think the stipulation idea is a good chance for them to resolve the case quickly. Otherwise, the hearing will come before the, the council next week. And again, it's gotta be less than five, maybe three.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
But my question kinda got cut off with the answer.
All the questions that's asked.
So, Kale, blatant disregard, now we're talking blatantly, mo- over two days being open, how many were done that way?
I can only recall three that basically told the police department to go pound sand.
Okay, I think those are the ones that we need to focus on then.
Yes, yes, I agree with you. Anything else for, for the night?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A second.
All in favors?
Aye.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Advisory.
Wow, now we got. The advisory committee come to order. But the minutes reflect all members are present, I think. On the agenda, number forty, reappointment of Brian Keller, Lisa, Alstead, and Michael.
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Second, second.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, carry. Number forty-one, the reappointment of Margaret Dunn, Michael.
Move for appointment, move for approval, Madam Chair.
And Paul Gieland.
Second, second, second.
And, and second, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. And number forty-two is a discussion regarding the city sponsoring a community run Fourth of July parade. This is something that I knew nothing about.
Madam Chair.
Maybe our city administrator can enlighten me?
Madam Chair, I can enlighten you.
All right.
Um, I brought.
Alderman Stefanski?
I brought this up because recently with the shutdown, I've been participating in parades with people for birthdays, anniversaries and things like that, and deployments to, to military with motorcycles and truck groups. Um, just recently, we had a classic car group join us. And we were talking about how we don't have a parade or anything going on for the Fourth of July. And the suggestion was brought up to have a parade that would just be involving motorcycles, a truck, the truck group, a classic car and muscle car group. And whoever wants to come out and watch down the parade route that we normally do for the parade, they can do that, they can wear masks if they feel like it, and anybody in the parade will be in their vehicle. And so this was a, a, something brought up for discussion so that we can kind of keep something for the Fourth of July instead of just not having anything.
Well, thank you for, for bringing it up. Uh, is there any member of the committee that would like to elaborate further on their opinion?
Alderman Stefanski, I have a question for you, and I'm sorry, Madam Chair, may I speak to the parade route? What, what area are you speaking of, Trey?
It would be the normal parade route that the Fourth of July parade usually does, so down Greenfield.
Can you hear me?
Down Greenfield, down to Seventieth, and then Seventieth to Veterans Park, and then it stops, right? Isn't that what we usually do?
So basically, the same, the same parade route that was in passed?
Yes.
And who would be in charge of this parade?
I can make it happen.
Okay. All right, any other discussion regarding having a parade?
Madam Chair.
Mayor Devine.
Thank you, um, is there gonna be any work on this concept that would have to be done by the city and would, if it's gonna be a city sponsored event, I believe we would have liability, is there gonna be a requirement for the police presence or street closures or any expense to the taxpayers?
Well, that was, that's why it was brought up for discussion, because we wanted to discuss that. Wanted to see what, what it would entail. And yes, we would obso- obviously ask for the streets to be closed while the parade route is happening, just like we do with a four, you know, a normal Fourth of July parade.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Alderman Grisham.
Again, Tracy, it, it takes a great deal to put a parade together, I think a bit more than what some may think. And I would have concerns, I mean, I, I'm supportive of, you know, the celebrations of the Fourth of July and honoring our, our servicemen and women as well, because I know that you were big on, you know, the Memorial Day parade as well. However, I would have concerns, like I said, as far as organizing. Sorry, how long of a dur- did you put a, did you put a plan together yet?
This was just brought up for discussion, because it just came up to me this last, right before the deadline for getting stuff up on the, on the agenda.
Okay, well, I would think, and this is just my opinion, time is of the essence, obviously, as the holiday approaches. Would it be reasonable to say, let's put this on hold, and you put together something and present it so that we have a better understanding what we're discussing?
Yep, for the sixteenth.
Or options for it?
Yep.
Yes.
I can do that, that's.
Is that be fair, because I'd make, I'd make a motion to put this on hold to, to discuss it on a.
I'll say it.
That's exactly what my plan was to do that.
All right, super, thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, there's a discussion, and there's a need to motion on this particular one.
Thank you, thank you.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Basically, I agree, basically, uh, parades take a, a great deal of planning. The parades that we had, we start a year ahead of time to plan and make sure that, that we have all our ducks in a row, you might say. So basically, I think if you present a plan and we look at it and share the expense that it will be incurred, that way we could have a, a better understanding of what basically it would be about. So I, I suggest that come up with a plan and present it at, at the sixteenth council meeting.
Will do.
And do we need to make a motion to? I'm sorry.
Pardon me?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Alderman Grisham, yes?
I was just gonna say, do we need a motion, because I'll make the motion to, uh, put on hold till the sixteen?
No, it's a discussion, I don't, no need.
Uh.
Okay, I didn't know, thank you.
Attorney Kay said it wasn't necessary.
Super.
Thank you, now I would add.
Move for adjourn, Madam Chair.
It's been moved that we adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
A second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carry, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will call the common council back to order. And I will ask our clerk to, even though I can see you all, call the roll.
Alderman Persson Weigl.
Here.
Grisham.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Keen.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Rote.
Here.
Stefanski.
Here.
Tenorio.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Ten present.
Okay, we have a quorum, I had a request from our clerk to circle back to item number two, the minutes. Was there a change?
We just didn't vote on those, I don't believe, so.
Oh, I think.
Did we?
No, we approved.
I do, I do have something written there, but someone told me that we didn't, disregard.
Yeah, I have Lysick and Vitale.
Yep, that's why I have two.
Okay.
Sorry.
We're good, thank you.
Fine, we're fine, Mayor.
Okay, good, let's start out then with the administration and finance committee, I will ask the clerk to read out that report.
Items four and five were recommended for approval by both administration and finance committee and the public works committee. Um, did you, should I read those separately by committee or how did you?
We always do them together, and I read them out normally, I would suggest that we can read them out together right now.
Okay, items six through eight, and that committee also made the following recommendations, approval of items six through eight, place on file item nine and ten, recommendation of denial for eleven and twelve.
Mayor Devine, I have moved for approval of the committee report.
Thank you, Chairman Haas. If there are, oh yeah, we don't need that second anymore, I remember that now. Any other discussion on the administration and finance committee? Okay, hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
All right, Alderman Persson Weigl.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Rote.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
And in favor?
Motion carries, thank you. Now we, then we have the public works committee up next, I'll ask the clerk to read out that report.
The public works committee made recommendation, the following recommendations, items thirteen through fifteen were approved and items six, item sixteen was placed on file without objection. And, okay, sorry.
And then if the chairman, Rote, would like to make a motion to approve?
Did we do eighteen to nineteen as well?
I'm sorry, and those were also recommended for approval, items eighteen and nineteen, thank you.
Otherwise, we wouldn't do Highway one hundred this year. They'd really be mad.
Oh, no.
I move for approval in accordance of the committee report.
That's why you're the chairman, Alderman Rote.
That's right, good, good choice, Mayor.
Is there any discussion on the public works committee report? Okay, hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Weigl.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Rote.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Okay, motion carries, then next we have the safety and development committee, I'll ask the clerk to read that out.
The safety and development committee made the following unanimous recommendations, items twenty and twenty-one were approved.
Move for adoption of the committee report.
Thank you, Alderman Lysick, is there any discussion on the safety and development committee? Okay, hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Persson Weigl.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Rote.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Ten in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, motion carries. License and health committee, I'll ask the clerk to read out that report.
License and health committee made the following recommendations, item twenty-five was placed on file, item in twenty-six through twenty-eight were recommended for approval. Items thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-nine were recommended for approval. Item thirty-two A was recommended for denial and item twenty-two was recommended for approval on a three to two vote.
Madam Clerk, I've moved to approve the, the adu- adoptions of the committee report.
We will, if I could ask Mr. Chair or Madam Clerk, can we keep item thirty-two separate for now, because it's a split vote?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Oh, thirty-six, I'm sorry, was the other one.
Uh, thirty-two A was the deny.
Okay, wasn't item?
Thirty-six is, thirty-six is the one that was a split vote.
Right.
Thirty-six was.
Thirty-six, twenty-two, and thirty-six.
Yes.
Okay, so on the balance. Alderman Vitale, did you make a motion to approve?
Yes, I did.
So far, okay, any other discussion on those? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Persson Weigl.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Rote.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Ten in favor, zero opposed.
That item carries?
And then, item twenty-two was recommended for approval on a three to two vote.
Alderman Vitale, you wanna move approval of that one?
Yes, I move for adoptions of the committee report.
Okay, any further discussion on item twenty-two?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas.
Yeah, someone could explain the, the reasons in favor and the reasons opposed for the persons not on the committee? Please tell me why I should vote yes or vote no?
I'll start, Ranky, uh, I did have reservations, I, I certainly approve of, um, enhancing our businesses. However, I have concerns regarding certain businesses being able to post their wares out on the city. I'm thinking of vape and smoke shops and liquor stores, uh, those kind of businesses, I would frown having the opportunity for them to expose their wares and sell them outside, however, good restaurants, I, 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 I do approve of the restaurant part. However, I do have reservations regarding certain businesses, and so I voted no.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Tom.
Alderman Haas, I'm not on the committee, but I was in attendance at the meeting. And this resolution is in support of. And this resolution, um, is in support of, um. Administrative action to, um, relieve enforcement of some of the zoning ordinances. Um, to allow businesses to maybe operate outside of their establishment where it's legal to do that within their licenses. Um, in other words, a retail shop that wants to put some, uh, items out in front of their store would be able to do it. Um, the city attorney tells us that the mayor and staff already have the ability to, um. Uh, give temporary relief for enforcement of ordinances. Whether we pass this resolution or not, isn't gonna change that, it's just the council showing support, um, of, uh, the mayor and, and staffs. Um, assisting small business at this time.
Thank you, Alderman Lysick, I think you, you addressed the, uh, issue, the same thing, uh, during the license and health, to me, that's, uh. Something that's, that's a good, uh, move in our part, like I said early. I mean, it, it does make sense to support the mayors and the, uh, staff, you know, and, and, and of course, the, uh. Small business that, that they've been suffering, uh, a lot, you know, so, uh. I'm sure, like I said, some detail would be, uh, addressed, you know, for the private, uh, property owners, you know, the business places. Where they'd be able to do it within their property, some of them, if they're within the sidewalk. You know, rules, I think, ones that provide the path. Messages, you know, for, for pedestrian to walk through, I mean, I don't see any, any problem, really. I mean, like I said early, we have a short, short summer here, you know, I mean, uh, winter doesn't take long to be on us, you know, so. That's why I'm, I'm supporting that just as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you, Ald- Eli Alderman Stefanski.
Um, Kevin, the, the concern I had, I did, I am supporting it, but the concern I had was making sure that these businesses. Kept the right of way for people open and as long as they're following up to the ordinances. And they can do that, I was okay with it.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Haas, oh, sorry.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Elder Person Grisham.
Well, since I'm go- since I'm voting no, uh, I'd like to explain why, and one of it was, I am in support of the small businesses, but I think it will cause a lot of confusion. And added resources on our end for businesses that, um, are. Going to impede foot traffic and from the way it is, um, stated for changing that zoning is, these, um, provisions have to take place on private properties. So it cannot be on sidewalks, and a lot of our businesses are going to end up doing that, I think it's gonna be an issue. I don't think it's that big of an issue that if we want particular businesses or businesses, uh, want to have racks and, and other things, uh, that they, they can. Contact the city for permissions for that. So that was the reason I voted no, because. There's a multitude of, I think, legalities that go with it, and that puts a little bit more burden on the business owner as well, in the event there is risk or injury. And, uh, the fact that it's not a, a one size fits all for all these businesses.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, any other discussion?
I would like to, uh, say that in my district and that one, um, by Piggly Wiggly Theater. It's C B, C B. Is it a drugs, drug? Business, I can't remember the last letter.
The C D.
But anyway.
Is that American? Norman?
He had called me to complain, he wanted to. Have his wares on the sidewalk, because he, he, apparently he was looking for more business, and this is my concern. Businesses like that, uh, I don't think should. I don't think should be allowed to do that, so this would allow them to do that, and I, I. Don't support that.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Roat.
The Piggly Wiggly Mall, I believe that's, uh, private sidewalk.
I guess that I was using example.
Any other, any other discussion? Hearing none, on item twenty-two, madam clerk, please call the roll.
Elder Person Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
No.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
No.
Roat.
Aye, sorry.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
Uh.
Vitale.
Aye.
Eight in favor, two opposed.
Item carries?
Mr. Mayor.
Um, Alderman Vitale?
I move for adoption.
Sorry?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just had a quick question. Uh. Attorney Decker, were your lights out or were you gonna tell us a ghost story?
I apologize to the committee, these storms have knocked the power out of my house, so I lost all wifi and the computer and all lighting. I am advised by the council by cell phone using a flashlight from my living room.
Yeah, you had a.
Oh, no.
Pour under your face and it looks.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
I should probably put my glasses on.
I apologize for that, I, I turned the light on thinking it'd be okay, and then I looked at myself on the video and I said, whoa, I look, I look pretty scary, so.
I'm sorry.
He pay electric bill or what?
All right. Yeah, you know how it is, you know.
Probably get done quick then since these storms are coming through.
Yeah, so apparently myself and my neighbor got knocked out, so, um, yeah. Good, good luck to everyone tonight, hopefully it doesn't happen to you.
Yeah.
But thank you for your concern.
Thank you, okay, um. Next up is item thirty. Is it thirty-two A?
Thirty-six.
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 Yeah, thirty-two A was, uh, denied.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then thirty-six was a three-two vote.
Okay, on item thirty-six, are there any questions or is there any discussion from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
As a reminder, that was the young lady with the three OWIs.
Yep.
And what was, and real quickly, what were the years on those? Does anybody have the record in front of them?
Yeah.
Two thousand ten.
Hang on.
Two in two thousand ten, one in two thousand thirteen is my record.
Yes.
Thank you.
It was six years ago since her last one. Like you told us.
Thank you. Uh, if there are no other questions?
Yeah, seven years.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Elder Person Weigel.
No.
Grisham. Elder Person Grisham.
I think you're, I think you're calling me, aye.
Haas.
No.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Roat.
No.
Stefanski.
No.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vitale.
Aye.
Six in favor, four opposed.
Item carries. Uh, does that conclude the license and health committee?
Yes.
Thank you, mayor.
All right, thank you, Chairman Vitale. Next up, we have the advisory committee. I'll ask our clerk to read out.
Sorry.
That report.
The advisory committee recommended for approval items forty and forty-one.
Okay.
Okay.
Chairman Ranky, would you like to make, to approve that report?
Yes. Mayor Devine, I move to approve the committee report.
Thank you, are there any? Questions or is there any discussion on those reappointments? Hearing none, I will ask our clerk to call the roll.
Elder Person Weigel.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen.
Aye.
Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Roat.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Talley.
Aye.
Ten in favor, zero opposed.
Item carries.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we adjourn until Tuesday, June ninth at seven P M.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening.